The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the place of allegiance. And this morning, Commissioner Shaw will be delivering the invocation.
Dear Lord, fill us with the courage to lead and serve our community proudly. Help us to lead in the example you have shown us so graciously. Amen.
Amen. Praise the holy allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Ms. New Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Peter Chow.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the July 2nd meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so we've probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the July 2nd meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. Communications, Ms. Blackshear. Any communications?
All have been distributed, Your Honor.
Okay. So, Ms. Blackshear, on calendar items, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, Ms. Dixteen, any deletions or comments, calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this morning's calendar. I do have a couple of items that I would like to highlight. The first item is number, item number two, which is a service agreement for two years with Space Creator LLC. This is our work as we continue to enhance and strengthen culture in the city of Dayton that has a huge impact on our ability to retain and attract employees and create a great space for our employees as it relates to employment. So I'd like to call forward Barb Dosick, our law director, and Mike Rice, our chief of fire, to essentially walk through a little bit of what we've done and where we're going.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and Clerk Barb Dosick, Director of Law.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and Clerk Mike Rice, Chief of Fire.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. So we're here in relation to calendar item two, as indicated by the city manager, which is the contract, the Space Creator. This past year, we spent some time enhancing our culture, and that's what we're going to present on this morning. One of the things that we learned through this process over the last year, that when we talk about culture, it's really important that we're using the same words and we understand them to mean the same things. So we'll start our presentation this morning by what do we mean by culture? Simply put, culture is how we be and do team. How we be team, which are the experiences that we have, and how we do team, which are the efforts that we give, drive the collective outcomes for everyone, the team members, the organization, the public and customers that we serve, and our stakeholders. Culture matters. This is especially true in the public sector, where the needs of those we serve are widely disparate. Compensation for our employees lags behind private sector, and processes can be governed more often by bureaucracy than innovation. So it's really important that every single team member, from an individual and collaborative standpoint, is driving to create a culture of strong shared values, purpose, and excellence. The results of organizational culture work have been researched and documented across every industry at every level, and it touches every aspect of the employee and the customer experience. Understanding how much this commission appreciates data, here are some numbers to talk about the impact that culture has on every aspect of the organization. It touches recruitment, performance, innovation, retention, customer service, development, well-being, engagement, and resiliency. This morning, I only touch on three specifically. As it relates to customer service, 89% of team members who believe they have a distinct company culture say they see an increase in customer satisfaction. When it comes to performance, 76% of employees agreed that there is a clear link between their organization's culture and their own personal productivity. Finally, when it comes to engagement, when employees feel connected to purpose, there's an 858% increased chance in the likelihood that they'll engage. So as said before, culture matters. I know that when we were here last year, you'd asked for an update when we've made some progress, and that's why we're here today prior to voting on the amendment. Over the last year, we've provided an accelerant culture framework training so that we can begin to understand what we're trying to achieve, why culture matters, and begin to move leadership towards department-specific goals and action items. Culture is going to look different in every department, and we understand that. We also assisted in aligning programming that already exists. As you're aware, we have a customer service initiative, a health and wellness committee, employee action group, we've done DEI work. It's not about replacing that work, it's about making sure that we're capturing the efforts and the shared values there and weaving it into the culture work as we move forward. We also work collaboratively with leadership and enable departments to take unique approaches to socializing culture, getting employee feedback and input, hosting planning sessions, and incorporating the entire team in the development culture. Every department took a different approach to this work. So while the accelerant culture framework provided a great place to start and enabled a substantial amount of dialogue, we agreed very quickly that we wanted a shared culture framework that was specific to Dayton and that we could utilize across the organization. Collectively, we decided, at the city of Dayton, for example, when I'm talking about culture in the law department, or when Chief Rice is talking about culture in the fire department, we want our employees to be talking about the same things and using the same language. Collectively, we decided, at the city of Dayton, we want culture that's built on trust and transparency, growth and development, excellence and accountability, balance and well-being. We've dubbed these our pillars of culture. Getting to this point in the work, we decided that all city staff was the perfect opportunity to roll out this initiative the whole way across the organization. Shout out to the directors' table, who really leaned in and decided quickly, we wanted to highlight the employee experience the entire way across the organization as it relates to these pillars. And to talk about what we did next, I'm going to hand it over to Chief Rice.
Thank you. So as we wanted to showcase our culture work at the all-staff meeting, the directors came together and agreed on a common platform that we could show how each department really navigated towards its pillars, and we decided to create a video to play. And first, I'd like to recognize firefighter/paramedic Marcus Kincaid of the Dayton Fire Department that did an amazing job and has numerous times in creating these videos. A lot of work went into this, and we have a small piece of the video for you to see today.
At the heart of every department, across every department, city employees are building more than roads, parks, or programs. They're building a culture grounded in four core values: balance and well-being, excellence and accountability, growth and development, trust and transparency. In a fast-paced world of public service, where people know the importance of taking care of themselves and each other, from counseling support to simple affirmations like "you matter," well-being is not a luxury here, it's essential.
When I come in, I could be having a bad day, but somebody might come to the window, whether we're joking, or, you know, they're asking if I'm okay, or, you know, it's the small things just being recognized.
Excellence shows up in every corner of the city, from rec leaders setting the tone for future generations, to code enforcement officers revitalizing the neighborhoods they grew up in. Accountability here isn't just about what went wrong, it's also about celebrating what's going right.
But I think the main reason that we do such a good job here is we have a team that has open communication and can actually look at each issue from an objective viewpoint and look at it from the good and from the bad, and not just from one side.
Whether it's a promotion, certification, or just someone saying, "I believe in you," growth is deeply embedded in our culture. Because when employees thrive, the whole city rises with them.
My director saw something in me, and she approached me and said, "Lynette, I think you can do this."
Trust begins within our walls, in honest conversations, supportive supervisors, and shared solutions. And when we build that trust internally, the public feels it too.
That is how I found, in general, we're able to bridge those gaps when we're all able to come to the table and understand each other's perspective.
This is the culture that we're building, one where people feel seen, supported, and proud to serve. Because when we invest in our employees, we invest in the future of our city.
So again, that was just a small, brief snippet of that entire video. It was very successful in showing our employees doing their jobs at every level throughout the organization, and it got a lot of good feedback from the city employees that they saw. We did a brief survey at the end to see how we're doing, to share some of those results with you. So the most important culture pillar ranked by the employees was trust and transparency. The pillar most effectively demonstrated by the city is growth and development. And we had an 82% positive response to the sentiment on direction of organizational culture in the city of Dayton. So that was, they agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. And then we had an 84% positive response on effectiveness of the all-staff meeting, which was important. This was the third one, and I would like to say the best one yet for many reasons, but I think it went over really well.
So the contract that's before you is a two-year amendment. The total amount is $116,000, so it'll be $58,000 over each year annually. What will be included past the work that we've already done is continuing to build on that. I would highlight it's going to facilitate the implementation of department-specific goals and action items, making sure that the culture is understood, it's legitimized, it's socialized. It also includes a supervisor workshop, because we understand that our frontline supervisors have the most interaction with our employees, and so it's really critical that we have their support, their ownership, and their input in this process. It also includes an assessment so that we can make sure that we're seeing the changes that we intend, and then also leadership support as needed.
Okay.
That's it?
Good. Okay. Good?
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. You'll go with the citizens' questions before we do the city manager's questions.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
The next item that I would like to highlight, Your Honor, is Resolution Number 6874-25. This is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the state of Ohio Department of Public Safety for $399,996. And I would like to call forward Major Jason Hall to provide a brief presentation on the potential uses for the grant award.
Good morning. Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Dixteen. My name is Major Jason Hall. I am the, what? I'm sorry.
City Manager Dixteen. You just promoted me.
I still get just a tad nervous, even after all this time. I apologize. My name is Major Jason Hall. I am the newly-minted Support Services Commander for the Dayton Police Department, and bring forward this morning a proposal to accept the 2025 Violent Crime Reduction Grant from the state of Ohio Criminal Justice Services. City Manager Dixteen has already laid out is roughly a $400,000 grant that the state has pushed forward to fund crime reduction strategies in municipalities. We put forth what we believe was a very good proposal. The state actually agreed and awarded us this amount, which is the second highest award in the state, so we were very proud of that. The crux of this, how we were looking to use this grant funding, was to build upon and continue our use of technology to enhance our service to the city of Dayton. We believe we have a good history and a good track record of utilizing technology, examples being the Real-Time Crime Center, which is a relatively new construct for us, but has already started paying out in numerous ways. We've done several tours lately. We did one yesterday that had a very positive result, showing its capabilities in deterring open-air drug sales in downtown Dayton. And people were able to see that as it occurred. We also would like to continue using and expand our use of the automated license plate readers. This is a technology that has also been fruitful for us, providing for countless investigative leads, hundreds of cars recovered, and been useful in numerous investigations of crime and violent crime. We want to kind of continue this track record. What we're looking for is to be utilizing a thoughtful, data-driven, and layered approach to the technology, which would include expansion of the license plate readers, the use of video aggregation, reinstituting our gunshot detection program, and utilizing drones as a first responders, which is an interesting new practice that has taken hold throughout the country, that offers a lot of benefits, both to efficiency and accurate delivery So out of that nearly $400,000, the breakdown of funds for the first year would be $150,000 for the use of drone as a first responder, $105,000 for gunshot detection, the expansion of our license plate readers by 27, and a full-time NIBEN, which is the Ballistic Information Analysis, for 46,496. So all of these technologies, speaking of a layered approach, we believe this is the best way to go forward. So a lot of what we're trying to accomplish, we've tried things as standalones in the past, we believe this collection of technologies will work together to provide for the best possible results. This grant, this is part of a two-year pilot project. If approved, the grant would cover our first year. The second year, there would be ongoing costs. The drone as first responder is obviously an expensive program. It'd be $300,000 to continue on to the second year. Gunshot detection, $105,000, and ALPR maintenance would be $81,000 a year. The drone as a first responder, we believe that we're going to see a lot of improvements to our efficiency and, like I said, our service delivery to the citizens. A lot of the places that have instituted this program, notably Chula Vista, California, Scottsdale, Arizona, have documented where the use of these drones has been able to allow them to prioritize their response to calls. The notable example being instances where you have a call of a person down is the one that kind of sticks with me the most. A lot of the times, we'll get a person down call, and a small percentage of these calls, the person is in any real medical danger. We have a lot of it where someone is sleeping, resting, doing something else, and somebody calls it in. These calls get typed up as a priority one, which is an emergency response for us. Lights and sirens, obviously driving expeditiously to get to the scene. In these cases, a drone could be used to arrive on scene and detail what is going on, because a lot of what we'll see is, we'll get on scene and the person has gotten up and left, or been moved around, and it is obvious that that level of a response is not required. The gunshot detection component of this, with the continuing cost, we had ShotSpotter in the past. We can't say that using this layered approach will kind of overcome some of the shortcomings that we had with ShotSpotter. One ShotSpotter was an expensive program. It was roughly $205,000 a year when we were running it. And our responses, these calls were dispatched out as priority twos, which was a significant expenditure of resource as far as staffing goes. We are seeing staffing turning around, which alleviates some of that problem, but the use of the drone, as well as the ALPRs, reduces some of that demand. Some of this, we'll be able to respond with the drone instead of sending the crew directly out. So we believe that'll take care of that. And the program we're looking at is roughly 50% cheaper than what we were doing with ShotSpotter. ShotSpotter, one of the other big problems with that was, it was grant-funded. We lost our funding source for that. That coupled with the staffing requirements resulted in us stepping away from that. Obviously, everything that we plan to do on this, we are going to strive to make sure we're in absolute compliance, and we have appropriate community support to carry forward. All of this technology, if this grant is accepted, will be moved through all the protocols and procedures set forth in the surveillance ordinance. We are already working on policy and the surveillance impact reports, and we'll immediately start moving towards the community engagement components. If this is approved, the timeline is, once again, is it will be immediate. We'll start moving on this right away. There's parts of it that we could start that have already started. Once again, if the grant is not approved, if the, or the grant is accepted, but we run into any issues where parts of our plan are not adopted through the surveillance ordinance, we are able to provide, are able to submit for a grant modification through the state of Ohio to pivot to other avenues. So we believe, once I kind of probably sound like a little bit of a broken record, we believe this is the right way to go forward. We believe that this technology, we would be kind of reticent to kind of not embrace, not explore, not try to leverage this to the benefit of our community. We believe it's going to provide for more accurate and timely responses. It's going to provide for enhanced investigative capabilities and case resolution, and stronger inter-agency coordination and information sharing. And that is what I have for you this morning.
Okay. I'm sure, just by standing by, I'm sure we probably have some questions at the, the city manager has all her presentations done?
That's all I have, Your Honor.
You're good? Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
No, no calendar, Your Honor.
Not on calendar items. Okay. So I know we have some questions and comments up here. This is great information, and I know my Commissioners have some thoughts that they want to share as well. Commissioner Turner Sloss, does he have some questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. If I may, if I can backtrack a little bit, just a couple of questions for Ms. Dosick and Chief Rice, if that's fair. Ms. Dixteen? Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of questions. Thank you both for being here this morning and providing additional context as it relates to calendar item number two. So just out of curiosity, I understand this is at the directors' table. Where is HR in this, the Human Resource Department? I know they're part of the table.
Absolutely.
But are they leading the effort? Because I'm just, again, I would think that they will give the presentation or the briefing. But is it, again, I know that it is a working table with all of the directors, just trying to understand where the Human Resource Department is playing in all of this.
Commissioner, they're absolutely at the table. We have various leadership opportunities across the directors, the director cohort, and we have, and HR is certainly providing a lot of input, and they help coordinate and lead on the all-staff meeting. I have asked Ms. Dosick and Chief Rice to lead the culture because of the work they're doing specifically in their departments.
Okay. So could you elaborate a little bit specifically on the work that, you know?
Yeah, I can absolutely speak to my department's work. And I mean, in conversations and in trainings that we've had, in meetings that we have, I can speak at a conversation level what other departments have done. Of course, Chief Rice can speak to the fire department. My team is small, which is, you know, not like every other department. And so for what it looked like for my team was, I issued a survey and got results. What pillar means the most to you? What does it mean to you? How would you define it? Here are some of the definitions that we talk about, and we're talking about trust, and we're talking about growth. And then, where are the gaps? What would you like to see? And so an example of something that was really specific to my department was, our team really wanted in-house trial training. So they wanted us to bring a continuing legal education program into the department that was specific for us as government lawyers around trial. And so that's something that would be really different than something somebody would be asking for in the fire department. And so that's a highlight of one example. I know other departments talked about employees wanting help with resumes. Employees want an opportunity to get training in specific areas, understanding what opportunities were available across the organization. And so it really did look different, which is why it's really important that each department has a specific plan, because of things that, for example, the lawyers want, or the firefighters want, are going to look different from each other, and it's important in establishing and sustaining the culture that we're addressing what the employees want to be able to thrive.
Thank you.
And I can add, so from the fire department perspective, I do have a large team. And it's a great department, but there's always going to be gaps, and we want to develop a healthy organizational culture. We know across all departments, we sometimes struggle to be able to recruit, hire, and then retain. So it's important to create that organizational culture. For me, I'm reaching out to every level in the fire department organization, all ranks, doing independent 101, 360 surveys with them to understand what the employee experience is for each individual and how we can make it better through positive change.
Thank you. Thank you, Beau. And so I know you mentioned this is the third year, and we've seen some of the highlights of the various metrics. So just trying to get an understanding too, of once that data is collected, like, what are the metrics of the assessment itself? And then, how is that data essentially aggregated, and how is it being used to implement or to change the culture of the organization? What are the end results?
So that's a great question. Space Creator will be driving the assessment, building the assessment, and I would, I think it's safe to assume that that work is going to be built on all of the exposure and experience data and information that Space Creator has already obtained and working with us over the last year, to really make it specific to the city of Dayton and our individual departments. But I could not speak specifically to the questions that are going to be asked or the data that's going to be gathered.
And Ms. Dixteen, I would assume that we will get information on that once the assessment is completed and once we have all of the metrics? Thank you.
Yeah, the whole organization will receive that information each time we do it.
All right. And the final question that I have is, how does this come into play with all of the other, understanding that this, we're speaking of culture, right, and retaining and attracting talent and growing the organization, I would assume, right? I know we're down, we're at 1,600. Is that correct? What is our number of employees within the organization? We're not at 1,600?
It fluctuates as we have, you know, attrition. We have over, we have just over 1,800 authorized positions. So yes, any point in time, it can fluctuate based on vacancies.
Okay. Thank you. So my question is, where does this all come into play with the executive coaching and all of the other work that is being done when we're talking about retaining and attracting talent?
So as shared in the presentation, culture touches every aspect of the experience for both the employees and the customer. I mean, I think the data that was presented supported that really clearly. And I think that it, to the point that you made, it is important that we do this work, and we are doing this work on top of all of the other things that we are trying to achieve, because it is important that we attract and retain and care about our employees' well-being and create opportunities for their professional development and create opportunities for their growth. I think all of that is important, that they feel engaged, that they feel connected to having a place that people want to work, and we want people to want to work at the city of Dayton.
So it's just another added piece to, okay, I'm following. I think I'm tracking. I look forward to the assessment and looking at the final metrics and really seeing how all of the various different pieces work together. So, thank you, Beau. I appreciate your leadership. Thank you, Your Honor. And I just had another question in regards to the presentation from Major Hall, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Major Hall, thank you, sir, for being here this morning, and congratulations. I appreciate you providing an update for Legislation Number 56874-25. So you mentioned that, and congratulations first and foremost on being awarded, the department being awarded, DPD, the second highest grant, the 399, just shy of 400,000. So again, I just wanted to commend you and the chief and the entire command staff and the organization for the work that was being done.
Thank you, ma'am.
In regards to that, being a recipient of the award. So the question that I have is, you mentioned the 300,000 for gunshot detection, the 105,000, I believe, for ALPRs. I believe, for ALPRs, 81,000, no, I'm excuse, yeah, APR.
I was just, I was going, I'm sorry, I was going to-
No, please, correct me.
Yeah, it's, so the second year, are we talking about the second year costs?
Well, I know we're in the first year, and I know we're looking at the grant. That is my question. Like, where are those dollars going to come from to, to continue the program? Because again, we don't want to start and stop without having the continuation of these various programs.
Absolutely, ma'am. So obviously, the first year is covered by the grant.
Right.
The second year funding, we believe that there's strong potential for the photo enforcement program to fund, especially with, we have some other projects, like the new RMS system that will be sunsetting during that time, also freeing up funds.
The who will be sunsetting, please?
The easy case, our work on revamping our in-house record management system. So that project will also be coming to an end during this timeframe. So we believe that the potential for funding is, is there within-
At a photo enforcement?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, in a previous memo shared with you and packet, it exemplifies that the photo enforcement fund will have over a million dollars in it at the time, in 2026, when we need to spend money for the second year of this pilot. And that's exactly what this funding is for.
Okay.
And directed by the state. So we think that that is, that's exactly the source we'll be using.
Okay. And then, when do you, thank you, Ms. Dikstein, for providing that. And you're right, the packet indicated that. When, what parts will be used for immediate implementation? You mentioned that if in fact it is approved by this body, that it will, I assume that it will go before the community, right?
Correct.
For education, awareness, there will be a fallout piece that will, that will educate the community as to how these various uses of technology will be used in compliance with our ordinance? And then, what comes out of that? Like, if there are genuine concerns from the public, how will they be addressed? And how will we move forward for the various implementations of those three components of those areas highlighted?
So, this project, 100% will follow every procedure and protocol set forth in the surveillance ordinance. As in some of the past practice, or past projects, we will be addressing those concerns. So we will be compiling, we will be pushing out, when we get the comments, when we get the concerns, we get the questions, we'll be pushing those out forward-facing, so make sure everybody can see them. Once again, we have a robust plan, we will have a robust plan for community engagement with meetings, both at the residential level businesses, basically for anyone in the city. We will compile that, we will work on that through our surveillance impact reports. And also, we plan on having this back to the commission in September for review and approval.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And then, could you, just for everyone's, the public's awareness and edification, could you just speak to a little bit, and this is my last question, and thank you very much for entertaining my questions. The Real Time Crime Center, could you speak to that a little bit, and just talk about how that will be used and the purpose of that?
Absolutely. And that's actually the part I love talking about the most. So this is, the Real Time Crime Center, we have been working through developing that for some time. In January, we basically kind of set up. We have staffing place that includes a couple of people that have been temporarily transferred over. We have one full-time officer that's assigned there. We also use some of our light-duty personnel inside, or to work within the Real Time Crime Center. The thought process is, is we have a facility now where all of the various data and information streams can come centrally, be evaluated, and used to assist the officers out in the field. So the example that I gave when I was first up about the arrest that was made due to the open-air drug sales downtown. We had a detective that was managing and monitoring the downtown camera system. He observed the criminal behavior taking place, was able to watch, develop probable cause, contact the officers. Matter of fact, the officers are in the room today, and guide them into the individual, describing him exactly, and even providing them a picture on their KDT of the individual who is engaged in this behavior. So for the use of our resources, it is, it is absolutely phenomenal. It is very efficient. Instead of, you know, the idea that, hey, we'll put officers on fixed posts. And fixed posts and officer visibility is a wonderful thing, and we absolutely want to make sure we continue that. But it is, it consumes, it does consume a lot of staffing. In this case, the officers were able to go in, make the arrest with all the information already at hand. They knew exactly who they were looking for. There wasn't a question of who the individual they were focused on was. They had a picture of them. They knew where the illegal drugs were being concealed on that individual, and they were actually able to see him try to discard them via the cameras into the store. All of that passed on. So a big benefit, it makes the job for the responding officer much easier, much clearer, and it also avoids any, greatly reduces the potential for any misidentification or confusion at the crime scene. We've also used the Real Time Crime Center in large events. Once again, we hit a lot of festivals, we get a lot of large events downtown. The ability to use the RTCC to monitor and help with officer requests during that is a big benefit. So when we talk about this grant, and we talk about the technologies that are coming in, the RTCC is kind of the hub of that. It is, it is the platform, it is the foundation, is what is going to facilitate making these technologies useful in a layered approach, in a thoughtful, layered approach.
Thank you, Major Hall. And it just, the distinction from private citizen drones and the first responders drones, what, how would anyone be able to distinguish the two?
So there is. So, the nice thing is, is we do have a template, we do have a framework moving forward as far as how we handle transparency with the technology we employ. The technology we're looking at using for the drones as first responders also will have a transparency portal that will push out deployments when it was used. And one of the nicer parts of it is, is once the flight is completed, it'll have a flight path shown, where someone can see, hey, I saw a drone, what was it? Well, you go to the transparency portal, you'll be able to tell, well, that was likely the police department's drone. So.
Okay. So an individual will have to go out and be able, there's nothing that distinguishes them from?
It'd be very difficult, Commissioner, because these drones, the one, the project we're looking at for a lot of different reasons, these drones fly at 400 feet. So even if we put markings on the drone, chances of the private citizen looking at them going, oh, it's DPD.
Right.
Is not likely. So it would, it would completely be relied upon using a transparency portal or using an after-the-fact method.
I just will hate to avoid any, I will hate for any situation to occur where someone, if in fact it was used outside of first responders, and someone is perhaps fleeting, fleeing, or whatever have you, or they don't know the intent of that particular use of technology, and it may come to a point where they're trying to, I don't know, flee from the area, or it may be where they're trying to avoid interaction with the drone itself. But from my understanding, it'll only be used for first responders. So it will not be used to, in the sense of, I don't know, apprehending or capturing an assailant, or whatever have you. It will only be used for certain pieces, is that right?
So right now, what we're envisioning for the drones as first responder is, is obviously the high priority calls.
Okay.
Crashes, persons down, violent crimes in progress. So the higher priority calls, we're also looking at, you know, expanding its use within other departments. So, you know, for the fire department, there's some overlap, especially specifically with crashes, but you also have structure fires, missing persons. The ceiling's really kind of the limit, Commissioner. There's so much interesting stuff out there that is coming forward with the drones. We had talked about during the presentation on the surveillance report about delivering food. You know, the private industry has taken this up and is leveraging, and we're going to see a lot more drones in our air, both private and public. But there are programs out there, there's work being done to do things such as deliver flotation devices. If we were to have, you know, that might be something to be looked into. So we'll be constantly looking at the use and looking to expand the use. The drones as first responder can be used as a second set of eyes on a traffic stop, you know, activities like that. But it's, the intent is not to orbit and surveil.
Thank you.
The intent is to go out for specific purpose and reason, which will all be documented and auditable within our program. And as part of the process, we will be bringing you policies and procedures that will spell out how we intend to use these products.
Thank you, sir, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, you good?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm good.
Commissioner Fitchell?
Yeah, Major Hall, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
And I heard positive comments on the tour for the Real Time Crime Center from yesterday. That news travels fast, apparently. Is it possibility that I could get a tour of the Real Time Crime Center?
I think we could definitely arrange that.
Okay.
That shouldn't be an issue at all. Like I said, we love to have the company, we love to show it off.
Yeah.
The more the merrier.
Yeah, great. You know, I had an experience, I was in London, and within the city of London, there's a smaller area called the City of London. Like, there's the metro, and then there's, and it's like a one-mile square in the center. And I was there with a tour, and one of our tour guys jumped up on a piece of traffic furniture. And this city of London is like one of the most surveyed areas in the world.
I suppose.
There were, there was a London bobby there within like two minutes to tell him to get off the, the traffic furniture. So it was very responsive. Will we get, will we get the impact report on the drones as first responders before we vote on the grant next week?
That will not, we will not have that ready by next week. We will not have the impact report ready. We will have it ready by, by September.
Did you tell me that we were going to start using it immediate?
No, we will not, we will start the process for, for moving towards fulfilling the surveillance ordinance immediately. We will not be ready to deploy immediately.
Okay. And when will we get the impact report for the Real Time Crime Center?
I will check into it, sir, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So, once again, being somewhat new in my position, there's a couple of things I'll have to follow up on.
All right. Thank you. And then, I'll just note my concerns around the safety of drones and other, you know, air traffic within the area. I don't know, if you saw the reports out of Kerr, Texas, a helicopter trying to provide rescue collided with a private drone, making, thank goodness there are no injuries, but relegating the helicopter to be inoperable. So, I know that we believe that the FAA has the responsibility to do that, but I think as we continue to increase our use of drones, thinking about how the airspace in general is kept safe for all users is important.
And Commissioner, we obviously share that concern. Part of the program, when we looked at it was, because we do, we have medical helicopters in our area, we have a lot of aviation in Dayton, who would think it with it starting here. Part of the reason the cost, when you look at it, is multiple redundancies and backups to make sure that we do not conflict with manned aviation. So this program actually has radar as a component, as an extra backup. So that is what's going to allow us to fly at higher altitudes. So this program will meet every FAA requirement for deconfliction with flight.
All right, thank you. And Mayor, I had a question for-
Please.
Around the culture.
Go right ahead.
Yeah. And, thank you, Major Hall. We have over 100, if not 200, citizens who are on various boards and commissions. Have we looked about how we have conversations with them about culture? So is their part of the team, that they too are included in the work that we're doing in terms of establishing a culture?
They, the citizen volunteers are not, at this point in time, included. It's the staffing. So the staffing that are supporting those boards are certainly included, because it includes all of the 1,800 employees. There is, because there are, there, that is really important work within the organization. We can explore going beyond the organization when we feel like we've gotten to the pivotal point within, internally with the organization.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hey, you good? Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, this is for Major Hall. Sorry, you had to sit down already.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Wish I had a better process, so you guys wouldn't come back and forth, back and forth.
Right.
It's okay.
Mr. Mayor, I could always use the steps.
Get the steps in, good.
I'm just excited about this. Actually, not a whole lot of questions, just mainly comments. Really excited about this initiative. Thank you for going after these grants and getting them. It's just critically important. Question, what, what city was number one in terms of grant funding?
You asked me too quick, sir. I don't remember for the presentation. It was a big deal to me that we were that high up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk later about it.
And we've, and honestly, Dayton Police Department, we've been in that position numerous times.
Well, that's what I'm hearing, and that's why I kind of was thinking about that when you, when you brought it up, that we are really leading in this space to go after grant funding. I just really appreciate city manager and the rest of the organization for doing that work. Really important that we have these force multipliers, and to be able to have it paid by someone else, I mean, that's just, that's just everything to me. So we've already had some successes, as you've kind of started to roll this out. I heard yesterday about the videotape, or being able to observe the drug transaction that's down there. And especially for the hub, I just think that's really important, as we look at ways to kind of mediate crime throughout that particular neighborhood.
And Commissioner, what we're looking on here is typically, like most things, most complex problems, there's not a silver bullet. We kind of need that layered, we need that multifaceted approach to address a lot of these problems.
Right. And I have heard that this is working throughout the country. And Commissioner, to your point, I think I mentioned last week that my committee is working on this, and we'll be meeting next week in Columbus. One of the issues that we'll be addressing is FAA and the kind of regulations that we can put in place to make sure that everybody's safe in this work. But for, I think, the, what's your height threshold now with that?
So typically, it's 200 feet. Like I said, this program with the addition of the radar technology will allow for 400-foot ceilings.
Okay.
And at that, and at that height, honestly, a lot of the agencies that have used them at the higher altitudes, there is no appreciable noise on the ground, so it is less, very much less intrusive.
Right. I think, I think that's well beyond the FAA, below the FAA threshold right now. So we'll be looking at that. We really appreciate the information. I think this is going to be a great tool for our emergency forces, and I look forward to seeing and hearing your report out in the future.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You good? Commissioner Chilton?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. You don't have to be up there, we're good. Just have two things to say, one on each of the presentations.
You may want to stay, I got a question.
Oh, I got you. I just want to say that I'm glad we're paying attention to our organizational culture. I think we have all probably worked in good atmospheres and bad environments, and it's sometimes a fine line between those. Getting, feeling heard, making sure that management is responsive to concerns, having these sort of, these sort of discussions, I think it's really important, and I'm really glad that you're paying attention. Thank you, city manager. Thank you to all the directors. I know sometimes it's painful to do these sort of initiatives, but they really are important for the organization. I really appreciate that we're doing that. We need to do everything we can to support our workers who are supporting our residents, and this falls into that category. The other thing is, and you all have heard me say this, one million times, whenever we talk about the surveillance technology ordinance, I stress that we are one of the very few cities that has this sort of ordinance in place. I'm really proud that we have scrutiny by, by civilians, by the commission. We approve it, we review it every year. We have a process in place for approval, for examining it. It's not perfect. Commissioner and I have been talking about ways to make it better, and we will. But I'm really proud that we have this in place, and that, that we've taken democratic process and transparency to a next level, to make sure that people understand why we're using it, that people understand what it costs, people understand the rules behind it, which we approve. And it's always the best way, especially with technologies like these, that they're going to be part of our lives in the future. We want to make sure we're moving forward safely and in transparent manner. So I really appreciate my colleagues' support, all these years in doing this, city manager your support, and the staff that have to go through some extra hoops to get these things put in place. So thank you all.
Okay. Major Hall, just, just a couple of questions or comments. First of all, again, I'd like to thank my colleagues for the detailed questions that they're asking, because this is very important work as far as the city of Dayton is concerned. I know I did have a chance to look at the Real Time Crime Center, especially during the time that we were engaged with NATO. The services that you provided through that process was very, very valuable. Again, having some 1,300 people here from across the world was very, very challenging for us to find ways to keep them safe as well as keep our citizens safe and be able to keep track of everything that was happening throughout the city. So again, kudos to you and your staff in terms of doing that work. Additionally, somebody may remember staff that I shared some information, maybe last year about the opportunity to talk with the governor, the large six mayors of the state of Ohio, talk with him about the aspect of some of the crime issues that we have in our cities, especially our large cities. And the reason for doing that is adding additional support to these cities to help us keep our citizens safe, you know, with the gun violence and all the things associated with that, and us having more tools to address those issues. And one of the things that helped to justify that, which he thought was very important, I talked to them about the, the job opportunities that we have throughout this city and throughout this region. And that if we need to get more and more of our citizens to stay safe, not be engaged in violence and shooting towards each other, it would help us protect his investment. So the investment that the state's making in terms of creating job opportunities like Jovi on Main, all the things that are coming with the support from the state and the federal government, even the Sierra Nevada, all those situations are bringing additional jobs. We have to be able to keep our people safe, not just to be safe in the city, but also to be safe, stay around, be educated, and learn how to be involved in those type of opportunities, because it's beneficial to all of us in, in this whole space. One of the things that happened at a conference, and I wanted to get some additional information from you on, because you talked about NIBIN. Let's talk about that for a bit, because I think sometimes people are not aware of what that actually does and how you can track and find those who are responsible for some gun violence types of activities throughout the region.
Sure can, Mr. Mayor. The easiest way to describe NIBIN, which is the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network, it is a process that is ran out of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. And the easiest way to describe it is, is it's basically fingerprints for firearms. It's the equivalent of a firearms fingerprint. Most people who've watched any kind of crime drama knows about the idea of matching the ballistics from the bullet to a weapon, you know, the striations, the marks on the bullet. NIBIN goes a little bit farther and Mark takes all the tool marks and very unique markings that the firing pin, the extractor, the chamber, these other parts of the weapon impart upon the casing, the part that gets ejected and kicked out and oftentimes left at the scene. I was an evidence technician for five years. You know, recovered a lot of bullets. Most of the time the bullets were extremely mangled, were of very questionable forensic use, because the impact had basically destroyed them. And I had a lot of casings. And when I was an evidence technician, the casings basically told me the caliber of weapon that was involved. And that was really about it. The technology has moved forward, they use the microscopic examination to locate these distinct and unique markings on the casing, and then they can start matching casings from one scene to another scene, and then eventually to a weapon and hopefully to a person. One of the crux, one of the big issues, or one of the big focuses on the NIBIN system is, one, it keeps the database to where we have those casings to compare to, but it puts a very strong onus on quickly recovering and entering. Because the sooner that you do that, the sooner you get the information back, the sooner you can start making these links. So in the context of the current grant that we're talking about, the NIBIN analyst is a huge part of it, because that person takes all that data in and looks at it and starts drawing those lines, making those connections, and then providing the investigators with directed information to start focusing on potential suspects or people who are potentially causing harm in our community.
Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
I'll move to approve the City Manager's recommendation.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so if I may move in second to approve the City Manager's recommendations, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Okay. Legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
Second reading, Emergency Ordinance Number 32149-25, authorizing the City Manager or her designee to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement between the City of Dayton, Ohio and the Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA, for the refinancing of the proceeds of which were used for the purpose of paying cost of various improvements to the sewer system, authorizing the Escrow Trust Agreement and other documents relating to the refinancing of the Series 2015 bonds. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading, Emergency Ordinance Number 32150-25, authorizing the City Manager or her designee to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement between the City of Dayton, Ohio and the Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA, for the refinancing of the proceeds of which were used for the purpose of paying cost of various improvements to the water system, authorizing the trust, authorizing the Escrow Trust Agreement and other documents relating to the refinancing of the Series 2015 bonds. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner Sloss?
Aye.
First reading, Resolution Number 6874-5, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the State of Ohio Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of $399,996.40 on behalf of the City of Dayton. That concludes the legislation.
Okay. So at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. So this public hearing is related to the Citizens Initiative and the petition for a public hospital. We have several presenters this morning, and each presenter will have a total of 20 minutes to present, with the Clergy Coalition having a combined 20 minutes divided among six speakers. At the end of each presentation, the commission will ask questions. We also then open the hearing for the public comments, where each person who has registered to speak will have three minutes to address the commission. So the presenters will be speaking in this order. I think we have Alyssa Schreiner, Assistant City Attorney, and then we have presenter Mr. Joe Parlett, Assistant City Manager, as well as Virginia Blackshear, Clerk of the City Commission. Also presenters from the Clergy Coalition, Reverend Rockney Carter, Senior Pastor Zion Hill Baptist Church, Professor Mark Brown, Capital University Law School, as well as Bishop Richard Cox, who's President of the Clergy Coalition, Clergy Community Coalition.
Mayor, if I may, your script said six, that was just changed this morning, so there are only three speakers.
There are only three?
Yes.
Okay. But thank you very much. So let's proceed in that order. Good morning.
My name is Alyssa Schreiner, and I'm here on behalf of the Law Department to review the pertinent law for starting a city hospital and initiative petitions. You've received similar presentations in the past, but this one has been updated. So first, starting with Ohio law, does include a mechanism for a city to levy and collect a tax that would go towards paying for a public hospital. The city could annually tax a maximum of $1 mil on each dollar of taxable city property towards this end. Next, initiative petitions. On the screen, these are the, the city code sections that govern a process where a proposed ordinance is placed on the ballot to be voted on by the electors of Dayton. And if a majority voted in favor of that, then it would become an ordinance. The Clergy Community Coalition are attempting to use this process to create an ordinance for the city to levy and collect a tax to fund a public hospital in Dayton. So that brings us to this specific petition. The Clergy Community Coalition filed petition paperwork with the Clerk of Commission on June 25th, 2025. The Clerk of Commission submitted this to the commission at the next regular meeting, which would be that same day, June 25th, 2025. Within 14 days, there must be a public hearing, which would be today. That's the hearing. The commission has 30 days from June 25th to take final action on that, but shall begin consideration of the petition at once. 1,250 registered voters of the city are required on that petition. It's my understanding that according to a report from the Board of Election, that requirement has been met. There also must be, there's, those signatures must be within 90 days of each other. My understanding that the first signature was March 29th, and the, the deadline would be March 27th. They were submitted on, the petition was submitted on June 27th, I'm sorry, June 25th, so that requirement was met as well. So, for the next steps. First, the Clerk of Commission would present her report as to the petition's sufficiency and validity under Dayton City Code. Next, the commission would vote on the report. Then, the commission would vote on the ordinance if the petition were found to be sufficient and valid. It's my understanding that the clerk's report has been created and has been given to the commission and to the Clergy Community Coalition. It's my understanding that in the clerk's report, she discusses the petition's compliance with Section 1106 under the City's Code. If the petition fails to comply with 1106 under Section 1108, the commission is not to consider the petition. On Monday, it was brought to the Law Department's attention that there may be potential legal challenges to Section 1106. As it was brought to our attention with such short notice, we haven't had enough opportunity to evaluate this issue and the effect that it would have on the petition. The commission has 30 days from the date of submission to take action on the petition. That would give the commission until July 25th to take action. As the mayor outlined earlier, here is just a brief roadmap, which goes through the order, so I won't repeat it. I would add that I would like to reserve some time at the end for rebuttal in case there are any legal issues that are brought up during the hearing, if that's all right. But if there are any-ish questions or concerns I can address at this time.
Hey, Commissioners, questions right now? You want to wait? Hit pause.
I don't have any right now. Thank you, Your Honor.
You good?
I want to make public that I'm recusing myself because of my employment at Dayton Children's Hospital, won't be participating.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, so we'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Blackshear, Joe Parlett, Deputy City Manager. Thank you for your time this morning. I would like to share with you some key facts and findings. They're really important contextually for this consideration. As you're well aware, we are not hospital business folks, so we sought out the, the opinion of a third party, which in this case was warped. So they, they outlined six key consideration or angles from which to consider this decision. One, first, is the high total cost of ownership of a 300-bed hospital over 40 years. Totals $21.5 billion over that period of time. Annualized, that represents $536 million per year. Labor costs alone account for 88% of the total cost, amounting to $18.8 billion over 40 years. Obviously, significant initial investment. New construction costs are estimated at $460 million. And I'll remind you that these numbers are several months old at this point, so if anything, they, they could have increased. This significant investment does not include land acquisition costs or site development if needed. Ongoing maintenance and renewal costs, additional cost for operations maintenance revitalization is estimated $1.56 billion over 40 years. Each dollar of capital development generates a life cycle requirement of $2.7 million in maintenance, repair, and renewal. Medical equipment alone requires every five to eight years of replacement, resulting in a, we're missing some Ms., I'm guessing that's a $4 million lifecycle replacement cost for every million dollars of initial investment. Operational challenges, obviously, public hospitals face significant challenges, including staff shortages, high turnover rates, some experiencing over 20% turnover. The hospital will also require 3,000 doctors and nurses to maintain patient-to-doctor ratio below 15 to one, doctor to patient, representing a labor investment of at least $471 million. The fifth angle is considering economic and financial instability. Hospital expenses have grown, as we all know, by more than twice the Medicare reimbursement rate, leading to financial losses for over half of hospitals. The shift toward home-based care is really where the industry has, has gone, and remote treatment, and that reduces the need for such a large hospital. Finally, alternative solutions. Investing, as I mentioned, in home-based care and remote treatment can reduce the healthcare costs and improve patient outcomes. Enhancing existing facilities and focusing on outpatient and preventative care can be more cost-effective and efficient. So finally, in conclusion, building a new hospital with public funds and management is inefficient and ineffective due to high costs, ongoing maintenance requirements, and significant operational challenges. And again, the industry shifting to alternative healthcare models and improving exist, existing infrastructure should be the priority to ensure sustainable and effective healthcare delivery.
Okay.
That is all I have. Happy to entertain any questions.
Commissioners, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any for Mr. Parlett, but thank you for, for bringing this back to our attention and allowing us to revisit the, the study that was completed, so, a couple of months ago.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
No, I'm good on that.
You very good? Okay.
Thank you.
No, I do have a question, sorry. I just want to check with my Commissioners first, see if they had any questions. The, the federal challenges that are reducing healthcare support in, in terms of Medicaid, Medicare, do you have, clearly you don't have a crystal ball, but thoughts on how that will affect the ability for sustainability as far as the hospital is concerned?
If I were to just reference our reliance in terms of emergency medical services, which is where we do, you know, as an organization, touch upon medical. I know our billing is, generally speaking, 60% Medicare/Medicaid paid. So our EMS revenue is significantly reliant upon Medicare and Medicaid. And any changes at the federal level, you know, would really negatively impact our financials. Because as you may be aware, we, we bill well above what Medicare and Medicaid actually pay. We can't determine what they pay. They're going to pay what they're going to pay, and they tell us that. So, the short story is, hospital in our community would be in the same boat, most likely, and substantially reliant upon Medicaid and Medicare.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, may I?
Yes, question?
I apologize, excuse me, I do have one question. I just wanted to get clarification as to why was the model selected for 300 beds? From my understanding, I know that is a very, a large number, and then given our population and just giving the, some of the presentations and the briefings and conversations from the Clergy Community Coalition, that number is inaccurate in terms of what it is that they're seeking for a public hospital. So again, I just want to get an understanding as to why that number was used as a model to base for the various six factors that were indicated in the report from Wilt.
I don't have direct knowledge as to exactly where that number came from. I believe it was modeled after Good Samaritan, but I could be mistaken, no. I'm not sure.
No, that's fair, Mr. Parlett. Thank you. And if we don't have an answer, that's...
But if we were to say 200 beds or 100 beds, the numbers could be scaled that way accordingly.
Yeah, the ordinance that was put forward by the Clergy Coalition was what Wilt based their analysis over. So it was some of the services and things that they were asking for. That was the, that was what they selected from reading the ordinance and putting together the full service.
I can't hear because they're talking out in the audience. Can you gavel them?
Yeah. Okay, if we can hold the conversation down, and we'll have a chance to get the correct information or the, whatever, updated information from the Clergy Coalition when they make their presentation. Okay? But thank you for the question, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parlett.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Blackshear?
You have the Clergy Coalition.
This is the other.
Okay.
The next speakers.
All right, this order. So have Dr. Rodney Carter.
Good morning, Dr. Carter.
I don't, I don't, I don't need that.
No, that's okay. I remember last time, it's tiny, you can barely see it.
I don't need that.
If you put it up. No, that's not what you wanted?
I don't need it.
You don't want it up?
I don't need it.
Then you can use that.
Okay.
You may begin.
Okay, I'm doing some formalities right now. They state my name and number. I don't know, I don't know. I'm just waiting on you.
State your name.
Okay, I'm Reverend Dr. Rodney Carter. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.
Morning, again.
I'm here on behalf of my colleagues at the Clergy Community Coalition to continue to speak to and advocate for a public hospital for the constituents, for the homeowners, for the taxpayers, for the voters on the West Side of Dayton. I'm extremely excited to come. I've been here before. My narrative is always the same. I was going to speak on some other things, but we have an attorney to do that a little bit later. I don't need to do that today. What I want to speak about today is something that we all are very, very familiar with, and that is the hurt and pain that is afflicted on certain people because of governmental decision-making. I heard a reference to it today in a report, and I thank God for that report, but I heard reference to what is happening at the federal level in regards to the reduction, the cuts in Medicaid and Medicare, the cuts in welfare programs, SNAP programs, feeding programs that going to detrimentally impact disproportionately people of color. I also know that healthcare cuts are going to do the same thing. It is estimated that at least 150 hospitals across the country in rural areas or urban areas that are populated by people of color are going to close. When hospitals close, we argued this since 2018, when they closed Good Sam and demolished it, when hospitals close, people are going to die. I work as a chaplain in a hospital, a fully functional hospital, where people die every day, in a fully functional hospital. And we have hospital situations or hospital networks that, to help ease the burden, we need a hospital partner. If we had a hospital partner, if we had Premier, if we had Kettering, if we had Children's that would partner in a municipal hospital, that's what you need. That's how we got the hospitals going anyway. And this particular body is in partnership with Premier Health. They were in partnership with Premier Health and Good Sam, they were in partnership in other adventures. I don't know why we can't seemingly partner now for healthcare for people on the West Side of Dayton. I understand what goes on, but I want to encourage this particular body. We can talk about the law, we're going to do that, the black letter law, I'm a lawyer. We can talk about that till we're blue in the face. I don't want to talk about the particulars of the black letter law. I want to talk about the spirit of the law. There's a spirit of the law that says, no matter what we do, we do for our people. You do for your constituents, all right? That means that we have to be filled with compassion. You have to be filled with empathy. You ought to be filled with love for the least of these. I'm talking about people who don't have access to quality healthcare. They have quality healthcare in quadrants of this county and this city where there's healthcare on top of healthcare. I don't have to tell you who that's for. We already know who that's for, we had the charts. But there are opportunities for us to balance the playing field in regards to that. But it's going to take compassion, it's going to take, it's going to take empathy, it's going to take love from this body. The Ephesians 4 and 32, Reverend, says that "be ye kind one to another," tender-hearted, praying, caring for one another, forgiving one another, as God, for Jesus' sake, hath forgiven you. When you need healthcare, you go get it. We understand that it's expensive. I'm just asking for us to think about ways in which we can provide healthcare for the constituents in Dayton who need it the most. That's all I had to say. Thank you so much for letting me speak this morning. Amen?
Thank you. Amen. Thank you for your comments. Next person, Professor Mark Brown.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name's Mark Brown. I'm a law professor at Capital University, but I'm also a licensed attorney here in the state of Ohio, and I'm here to represent the Clergy Community Coalition. I'm only here to speak this morning to the legal question of whether the Clerk's report should be adopted by the Commission. I don't speak to the merits of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, though I do believe it does have merit, but I leave the merits to the sponsors of the ordinance. In regard to the Clerk's report that is before you, the Clerk is 99% correct. The one error I think the Clerk made is with the 1106 violation, which the Clerk concluded invalidates the petition and prohibits you from considering that petition. 1106 requires that the sponsors, the Clergy Coalition, disclose to the city of Dayton donors. In fact, the 1106 requirement is that all donors be disclosed. The Ohio Supreme Court has ruled that these financial disclosure provisions, built into Chapter 735, I need to step back here a second, the Ohio Constitution guarantees the right to popular initiative. Ohio, by statute in Chapter 735, has built a default mechanism for municipalities. Chapter 735 covers that. Now, for home rural municipalities, like Dayton, I believe is a home rural, those municipalities can enact their own ordinances to cover popular initiatives, and that is what I believe that Dayton has done here. Interpreting Chapter 735, which is the default mechanism, the Ohio Supreme Court has ruled that an almost identical financial disclosure requirement cannot be used to invalidate a petition. Now, the Ohio Supreme Court says it's not a precondition. Instead, if the petitioners violate the financial disclosure provision, there are punishments built into the Ohio Code to deal with that, but the petition still goes forward. Now, 1106 in Dayton is mirrored on Chapter 735's disclosure provision. There are a few differences in the language, and I've spoken to the attorneys, your legal department about this, and we are in discussions about this. There are some differences in the language. But I think a very good argument can be made that the Ohio Supreme Court's decision that deals with Chapter 735, that's called the Hasselback Decision, it came out in 2019, also should be applied to 1106, so that a violation of 1106, which is the donor disclosure provision, cannot be used to invalidate the petition. The petition still goes forward. I think a very good argument can be made in that regard, and again, we're in discussion with the legal department about that. Now, assuming that's incorrect, and assuming the Commission decides that 1106 should be used to invalidate the petition for lack of the donor disclosures, that presents a huge First Amendment problem under the United States Constitution. The US Supreme Court in a case called the Bonta Case in 2021 changed the constitutional landscape significantly in terms of these donor disclosure provisions. Now, the Bonta Case came out of California. It was not an election case, it was not a campaign finance case, it was a case involving charities in California. California required that charities disclose their quote-unquote "major donors." So it didn't require that they disclose all of their donors, not just their major donors. The lower courts, before this decision was handed down, had applied a fairly lenient test to these disclosure provisions. So that quite often, these donor disclosure provisions could survive First Amendment scrutiny. The First Amendment concern is freedom of association and freedom of anonymity, so that donors can associate with groups and remain anonymous. The Bonta Court in 2021 invalidated the California law and handed down a new test. The test is now called exacting scrutiny, which makes it very difficult for donor disclosure provisions in the charitable context, in the election campaign context, in the politicking context. The Supreme Court in the Bonta case relied on all of those cases, and it said this test applies across the board. It covers campaigns, it covers elections, it covers initiatives. The Bonta Court's exacting scrutiny makes it very difficult for donor disclosure provisions to be constitutional, to satisfy the First Amendment, especially donor disclosure provisions that are universal, that are all-encompassing, like Dayton's. Justice Alito, in a concurrent opinion in the Bonta case, called these "blunderbuss disclosure provisions," and he voted to strike down California's. Post-Bonta, post-2021, several lower courts have invalidated donor disclosure provisions as being facially unconstitutional and thus void under Bonta. Even donor provisions, donor disclosure provisions, that have triggers, that have minimums, like $1,000, you have to disclose donors who give you more than $1,000, even those have been invalidated. Now, with that said, there's a mixed bag, there have been a couple of lower courts that have sustained donor disclosure provisions with more significant triggers, like $5,000 or $2,000. My point is that a donor disclosure provision like Dayton's, which requires the disclosure of every donor, even if she gives you a penny, under Dayton's ordinance, you've got to disclose that. Even an organization that doesn't spend a dime has to disclose those who gave it a penny in Dayton. That kind of a universal disclosure provision, we believe, is on very thin ice under the First Amendment, and I think a significant First Amendment challenge can be made, a facial challenge, which would mean that provision is void. And because it's void, it cannot be applied to the Clergy Coalition. And thus, it cannot be used to prevent the initiative from going forward, from going to the next phase. So I would urge the Commission, we have a canon of constitutional avoidance that we often use, which says something like, if you can avoid the constitutional difficulty, do it. I would urge the Commission to avoid that First Amendment difficulty, and go ahead and allow the initiative to move forward. Take the vote on whether you want to adopt or reject the committee's report. Reject it, and then allow the initiative to move on to the next phase, which would be the phase whether you decide to adopt, to vote yes on the proposed ordinance, which would then send it to the ballot, or force the committee to go out and collect another 20, 1,250 signatures. Regardless, let it go to the next phase, avoid that difficult First Amendment problem. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Questions? Commissioners?
No, I don't have any questions for Professor Brown, Dr. Brown, but thank you, sir, for providing all the additional context and providing the information, the detailed information. So thank you for being here.
It's my pleasure.
Okay. Thank you again.
Hold on.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, just a question, quick question. I'm trying to understand how this process kind of evolved. So, did your clients not submit the form because they disagree with the idea of 1106?
In part, in part.
So my question then is, why did they submit it the first times that the petitions were brought forward?
Different donors, different amounts. Each submission, according to the statute of the ordinance, requires that the affidavit be filed. And every time you've got to collect, like the first two, I think were rejected for lack of 1,250 valid signatures. The next time, you've got to get new signatures, which that takes additional resources. And so you're supposed to report those additional resources, right? They chose not to this time.
So their objection was to the reporting of the additional resources? I'm just trying to get clear.
That's part of the objection, that is the constitutional objection, yes. They cannot be required to disclose their donors.
No, no, no. What I'm asking you, what I'm asking you is, is that the reason that they did not submit the form? I mean, I could understand...
That is one of the reasons.
I could understand, in other words, I could understand if they said, "We're not going to submit this form because we disagree with 1106." That's one thing. But just to not submit it, that's a little bit different. And my question kind of goes to the point that we've required others to do this, and I'm just interested in the, you know, how do we explain that if we're not using?
Well, I mean, we're in conversation with the attorneys, legal departments.
So we probably have some discussions to have, and some more conversation.
We can talk about that, yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
We're more than happy to talk about that, if maybe a possible solution, way around this, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Joseph? You good? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Your Honor, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so is it with some of the questions, and thank you, Commissioner, for posing the questions that you posed. You raised some interesting points. But with that, from my understanding, we haven't had a ballot initiative before us in quite some time. So in terms of the Section 1106, 11.06, excuse me, I think is, it's an invalid argument to make, being that we haven't had any citizen-led ballot initiatives in quite some time, I would say. So I think history shows that.
Well, I guess I'd like to ask the law director, is that the case? Have we had cases here?
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Good morning. Again, Bart Dosak, Director of Law, just for purposes of the record. My knowledge, of course, having been in the seat 10 years, the ballot initiative that I've worked on only has been the, this current initiative. Now, we've had groups come to us before and discuss it, but in actual utilizing the charter and RCGO provisions together in this way, I've not seen it in my time. I know my deputy director has spent more time with the organization than I have, and I don't believe he has seen it utilized either. So I think it is, I think both points are valid in the sense, and I know you didn't ask me that, but I can't help myself, in the sense that, yes, we had the same group of individuals present this document last time, and now this is a new objection, but we've not used 1106 recently. So, or had to, or faced this type of challenge before.
Okay, thank you. And again, just formalities, and just trying to get an understanding of the process. And thank you, Ms. Blackshear, for completing the report and providing that documentation before us. I really appreciate the work that you've been able to do. And I want to commend, for the record, to our Community Clergy Coalition and the work that they have done. that they have done, in being that this is, in fact, the third time, and they have collected the number of required signatures. So my question is, who advised when the completion of the report, who advised, Ms. Blackshear, I guess I would ask, who advised you in the completion of the report itself? Was it the law department, or was it based off of charter, or how was the report itself completed?
I put the, I put the report together based upon the charter.
Okay.
And I had it reviewed by our law department.
By law? Okay, all right. Thank you.
I mean, it's without, I think even Attorney Brown would indicate, it's without argument what 1106 says. It's without argument what I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, what 1108 says that the commission shall not consider unless the preceding provisions are followed. And so the clerk of commission, I would never suggest, takes the place of an attorney in interpreting, right? And so I think there's an argument to be made that her duties were fulfilled as they should be.
Absolutely, yeah. Did you not hear my comments? Absolutely. Yes, I agree wholeheartedly with you.
So it would absolutely fall on law to make that determination?
The law department, right. Under the counsel and the guidance of the law department, so, right. Thank you.
Excuse me, while you're up. Okay. So again, you and Dr. Brown are in consultation?
Absolutely. We received our first communication from Attorney Brown on Monday afternoon. We were able to have a phone conference that afternoon, and then received some additional case law in regards to his position, which we appreciated. And so while my team and I do really great work, we need a little bit of time to be able to dive in and do the thorough analysis that this honestly deserves, understanding what's at stake here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dosse.
If I may, Commissioner.
Excuse me.
I was not criticizing the clerk in any way. I've done a lot of these local initiative cases across the state over the last few years. And what we've discovered is that most of those cities and clerks have never done this before. And we're learning as we go. And so I'm not, certainly not. I'm just saying there are some questions that I think that we can work out. And we've all, and I worked on these sensible marijuana local initiatives that have become really moot after the statewide pass, but I did about three dozen of these throughout the state of Ohio. And every time, except one, we worked it out, you know, we were able to work through the steps that were needed, and I think we can do the same.
Yeah, we may need that. Okay, thank you. And again, congratulations as well for getting the required number of signatures. Right now, Bishop Cox? Good morning, sir.
Let me stand before you to urge you to pass this ordinance, not only because we have the required number of signatures, and because the people who signed the ballot initiative want this to happen, but I'm standing here representing people who are poor, people who have no insurance, people who have limited insurance, and people who are disabled. You may not know what it's like to live a disabled life. I transfer every day from a walker to an electric wheelchair. I stand before you with four-stage kidney disease, one step from dialysis. Stand before you with heart trouble. I have to do a stress test. They found a blockage in my heart. I don't know if I'm going to have to have an open-heart surgery or not. Stand before you as a chronic diabetic. I stand before you in a crippling disease that has crippled my body. My aide is here with me today. Every morning I get up, I cannot dress myself. I cannot take a shower by myself. I'm not alone to be in the house by myself. I have ambulatory care. You know what ambulatory care is? Ambulatory care means your aide is there. My aide is with me 21 hours a day. When I go to doctor's appointments, and I go to five doctors every four months, I have to be transported. I would have loved this. It was difficult coming in here today on a walker. I'm an avid civil rights leader. I was on the Elmen Pettis Bridge in Selma, Alabama. I march 16 miles a day, and now I can hardly get to my car. I'm standing here today because we elected you to serve us. We trusted you. We wanted to walk with you. You have people who have signed this ballot initiative, who has invested in their own health care. You've got citizens in this community that voted for you, that have no health care, and some of them are chronically ill like I am. You know, Good Samaritan was a public hospital before it got taken over and became a public entity and a nonprofit. It was started in the church, lasted for 100 years. And during the Great Depression, the community who cared about their health services raised enough money in the Great Depression to sustain that hospital that lasted 100 years. So all we're asking you to do is to walk with us, because we care enough about our own health care. Have some compassion. Have some love. Have a conscience. Think about the people who don't have adequate health care. Do you know that people who have limited insurance, like I got, can go to a hospital and get sit-home sick to die? Don't you care about the citizens who signed this ballot initiative, who want to make Dayton not only an economically feasible community, but a healthy one? And all you've got to do is just pass it and let the voters decide. They've already decided. They signed the ballot initiative. Have some compassion on the people that elected you to where you are now, and say, "Let's pass this and leave it up to the voters, for we got a conscience. You may end up like me." Thank God that I'm still here at 77. I thought about Jesse Jackson this morning. Jesse and I are good friends. He's in a wheelchair, too. He has limited people to take care of him, too. When I go home tonight, I'll probably have to take 1,500 milligrams of pain medication, because my body will lock up, and my aide that's sitting back there with me today will have to undress me, because I can't do it myself. And then she has to lead me in the shower and give me a bath every day, because I can't do it. But that doesn't stop me from fighting for health care for people that need it. And so I'm begging you, in the name of a resurrected Jesus, to pass this initiative. Trust the voters that trust it to elect you to where you are, and let's move on. And we can do it together and add adequate health care into this community and fix our broken health care system, not only broken here in Dayton, Ohio, but all across this nation. The burden is on you. We elected you. We trusted you. We want to walk with you. Now pass this ballot initiative for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bishop Cox. Any comments?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you move on, and to keep our record clean, I am going to present my summary and finding.
Okay.
So I, the clerk of commission, hereby find that the petition submitted by, the petition submitted by the community clergy, community coalition, was invalid for failure to file a statement of receipts and dispersments as indicated in Dayton, our CGO, Section 11.06.
Okay.
That is my finding.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, we have still reserved the right to ask questions as far as our attorney's concern. Again, so Ms. Schreiner?
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, Clerk, our recommendation is that you close the hearing and table any final decision on the clerk's report and the petition until the law department can further research the legality of Section 11.06.
Okay.
Any questions or concerns I can address at this time?
I do.
Commissioner, Lieutenant Loos?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Schreiner. Thank you for your presentation this morning. I do have a couple of questions. So what is the allotted time that the law department is asking for further review? And in consultation with Dr. Brown, Attorney Brown as well, right?
So it's my understanding that, I mean, you have 30 days to consider the petition, which would be a deadline of the July 25th. The next, from my understanding, July 16th commission hearing date would, it would not be an option, but the July 23rd date, commission hearing date, could potentially work. So I think two weeks would be sufficient. I would like, I mean, potentially, I would like to discuss with the team as well, but I think, just off the top of my head, I think two weeks would work. She's saying that because she doesn't want to commit us to something. I really appreciate it. Yeah, it's kind of a team. I mean, I think it's fair to say that we will have further consultation with the attorney Brown. We're going to do our own research.
We do that.
We're going to reduce it to writing and make a recommendation to you all as our clients in writing. And so we are committed to doing that, understanding the time constraints that we're under, understanding we're not going to hand you that on the 23rd or right before the 23rd. Ideally, mid-next week, we would like to have something to you in writing, understanding there's going to be a substantial amount of work that's going to have to occur between now and then. But we are not in any way trying to slow down the process, and we are very mindful of the time constraints, and then giving you all the appropriate amount of time to make a decision based upon our recommendation.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. So what provisions will be in place, let's say, if, in fact, the findings are, we're in disagreement, if you will, on what is provided by Attorney Brown, and then the law department says something, the complete opposite? Where does that leave, what provisions will be in place for the clergy community coalition in moving forward with the petitions? What are the next steps if that was to happen?
Okay, I think I understand your question. So we are going to make, we're going to come to a legal opinion in regards to 1106 and its constitutionality. I think we are all on the same page. This is a really nuanced issue. This is not something that we, we're focused both sides on what the issue is. And so we're going to make a determination about 1106 and a recommendation. I don't know what that recommendation would be. It could look like a lot of things. It could look like we concede that there are constitutional issues. It could look like a repeal. It could look like a rewrite. There are a lot of things that it could look like. As it relates to the initiative that is pending right now, what would be applicable would be 1106 in its form as it stands. And so depending on what our recommendation is, will depend on what we are doing from a legal standpoint next. And I know that's somewhat convoluted, but it's hard for me to guess where we're going to end up without knowing what exactly our recommendation is. And so our thought process is, and the law department, is that we get the opinion to you and our position to you as quickly as we can, and so that there's time remaining to either ask further questions or to have conversation. You know, and I, let me be thoughtful about, I think it has been communicated to us that they're aware of their opportunity to pursue the constitutionality in court, in both state and federal, and so, which is absolutely their right. That's not our goal, as has been indicated, but I would be remiss to stand up here as your attorney and say that that's not a possibility as well, as all of the other things that I mentioned. We understand, trust me, we understand that this has been circulated as many times as it has been. We understand that there's one issue that some may view as technical, but we are committed to getting this right. I have to be mindful, as a city attorney, about precedent. I have to be mindful about what this looks like moving forward. And then also, in the way that I would like to approach this, I also want to be mindful, while we're looking at 1106, we shouldn't be talking about the other provisions that abut it, because all of those requirements come into play. And as has been indicated on the record numerous times, we've not utilized it.
Okay.
So I think basically, on behalf of all the citizens that we have here in the city of Dayton, we have a responsibility to let you work these things out with Dr. Brown, and be able to come back to us within the timeframe that you suggest, so what, the 25th, 23rd?
25th would be the full 30 days. There's a regularly scheduled commission meeting July 23rd. That makes sense to be a target date, with us having come to a recommendation, potential resolution, or how we will be moving forward with Attorney Brown as well, and the clergy coalition.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But again, thank you, Mayor, for highlighting that point. Just for clarification, the 25th is the full 30 days, right?
Yes.
And so after that, if, in fact, there is no consensus, then as you already alluded to, then the clergy commission can move forward with other potential options legally. But the question is, too, where does that, in terms, put them in a position where they will have to collect an additional 1,200 signatures? That's my question. Will the clock start over?
I got you.
Pending, pending, right, the legal opinion that will be provided by the law department in consultation with Dr. Brown, just trying to get an understanding, will the clock start over, and will that time period provide, will it essentially hinder them and block them from moving forward if, in fact, that? Go ahead.
No, okay. I understand that clarifying question. So I apologize, because I don't think my response earlier addressed just that. You all have not made a final decision. Our recommendation today, based on the issues that have been raised, and giving them the merit that they deserve, and then the opportunity for us to do our analysis, we are asking that you hold your final decision. Your final decision, once we give our recommendation, is what will control what's next, not necessarily our opinion. We are asking that you hold your decision in regards to the report, and we're asking that you hold your decision in regards to the ordinance. And so I would suggest, at the meeting on the 23rd, you would be in a position then to make a decision based on the recommendation that we've been given and how you want to proceed, and that will determine what's next.
Great, thank you.
Is that clear?
Yes, that's clear. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, that's all the questions that I think we have.
All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mayor, we can't close, and we have three citizens who want to speak.
Yes, three?
Yes, on the public hearing.
Oh, please, let's let them have their say.
I would like to remind everybody that we have a three-minute time limit. I call to the podium William Davis II. Your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is William Davis, 7231 Hardwick Place, Dayton, Ohio, 45414.
You may begin.
Okay, good morning.
I live in Butler Township and have worked and volunteered in the Miami Valley since 1977. Thank you for this opportunity to address the commission. I come as a past member of the clergy community coalition, an active volunteer for over 20 years for health care for all Ohioans, also known as Span Ohio. I am not speaking for any of these organizations, but sharing my opinion on the issue of health care. The US pays more than double the cost per capita for health care for below-average longevity. There are third-world countries with lower maternal and infant mortality rates. A major problem is the unsustainable way we pay for care. It was my understanding that we were at a crossroads where the commission can vote yes to accept the 1,250 signatures gathered and allow the public hospital funding question to be put to the voters, or force the volunteers to gather another 1,250 signatures to override a no vote by the commission. You already know that this group has made two prior attempts to collect the necessary signatures, and this third time, they were successful. I personally gathered over 90 signatures, and I know other caring and dedicated volunteers have spent hundreds of hours in the process to collect far more. Given this dedication, it is evident that Daytonians want an answer to the million-dollar question. Are the people of Dayton ready to ante up for a new hospital to provide care in West Dayton? I have no doubt that these volunteers will get the additional signatures. The question is, are you ready, or are you really going to put them through the process again and waste more of their time that should be used in other planning? I urge you I urge you to acknowledge the years of optimism, persistence, and toil that has gone into the effort to have a public hospital, not controlled by a mammoth profit-driven medical network that has failed to move the needle on health outcomes. According to the Health Policy Institute of Ohio, the Buckeye State ranks 44th in the country for quality of care. Closing hospitals and moving care further from the people is not going to make progress on the mission to improve community health. I will try to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Nancy Keel, 309 Hacker Road, Dayton, 45415. We have, for the last 90 days, really a year and a half, been collecting petition signatures for the West Dayton Public Hospital Ballot Initiative. And during these thousands of encounters, the circulators have had, have had, there sometimes was a person that hesitated. They would read the literature, and we would say, this is not a vote. What you're doing is giving other people the opportunity to vote on this legislation and to place this on the ballot. And once they heard this, they were giving others the chance to vote. They would sign. This is what we are asking today. Read the legislation and enable people to have the choice to vote. Place this legislation on the ballot and give the power to the people who elected you. Now, we have a history, Clergy Community Coalition and the Dayton City Commission. We keep coming back. Most recently, in the public hearing, we endured the Woolport Report, which was a gross misrepresentation of what we asked for in a public hospital. This document was created by the leadership of Ms. Dikstein with backroom meetings with the principals of Premier Health, Kettering Health, and Dayton Children's. I mean, can't you smell the stink from that report? The hospital triopoly is attempting to keep a hospital, a hospital, from the west side region of Dayton. Collusion, conspiracy, and we can support this based on the documents we procure through our Freedom of Information request. The complete failure of this legislation body by some who were members of the commission at the time, then Commissioner Mims, Fairchild, Joseph, and Shaw, to harness your legislative power to stop the closure and especially the demolition of Good Samaritan Hospital. Dr. Rockney Carter argued in front of this body for years on the strategy you could have used to stop it, but Premier dangled gold in front of your eyes, and you were hooked. This list is long on how you attempted to stop the group of salt-and-pepper old people who are making good trouble. Good trouble. How many times are they going to fall and back, and get back up? How many times are you going to push against us? Today, here, here we are this morning with a report from the Clerk of Commission, Ms. Blackshire, of an invalidated petition of what the Board of Elections calls a verified successful petition initiative. We did it. We got enough signatures, but instead of working with us on the last day of collection or minor clerical errors, you are opting to shut the whole thing down. No one, and I mean no one, has ever done a ballot initiative in Dayton in recent memory. So everyone is in uncharted territory.
Okay, thank you for your time.
I understand. So right now is the time of your redemption.
Ms. Keel?
That's what this is.
Ms. Keel, please.
Turn away from the power of Dikstein, Premier, Kettering, and...
Ms. Keel, please.
Now, I don't know if you're going to vote this morning. I don't know what our attorney, Mark Brown, said you were going to change your trajectory.
Ms. Keel?
What we do know is we are prepared to go out 25, to get another 2,500 signatures. And you have to weigh...
Ms. Keel, please take your seat. Are you disrupting a public meeting?
Speaking to F1 in this room.
Ms. Keel?
You to the land.
Yeah. You're disrupting a public meeting. Please take your seat. You will be removed from the chambers. Ms. Keel?
Contact us on Facebook, email us at CCC.
Sir?
Sam at gmail dot com, or call 937.
You're officially out of order, Ms. Keel. Please.
424391 to get a package to collect the signatures. Now, please, if you are...
Ms. Keel?
And you want to collect signatures?
Please, sir.
But this package is written on your computer, under a, under a logo of nails. Please...
Ms. Keel?
Don't say you're going to do something and not do it. We don't have the resources.
Please, sir.
But if you want to pledge to collect 25, 50, or 100 signatures with best unpaid volunteer bid out there, please contact us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keel.
Thank you. Thank you. Call next speaker, please. We have a timeline, sir. We explained that at the very beginning, and everyone has honored that until now.
Name and address for the record.
Kathleen Galt, 5066 Safeway Drive, up Dayton, Ohio. Most of you guys...
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Most of you are aware, you've been with us for our efforts. You know, we came, we begged Mayor Whaley, the Commissioners at that point, Mims, Shaw, Joseph, and Fairchild. We begged you guys to help us try to save that hospital. It didn't work. We begged, we did a federal complaint, we asked the city numerous times to do an independent assessment of what the healthcare needs of Northwest Dayton are. We asked you guys that over and over and over again. The Woolport narrative is a false narrative. We are not asking for what was at Metro. That is a false narrative designed by some of the city officials. So again, you guys have been aware of what we've done over the last seven years and how many efforts we've made, including the federal investigation. The UN had beamed us into a hearing in Geneva. We've done all sorts of things. People can go to 444, or CCC for Good Sam, to find out many of the things that we've tried. So this last thing is the ballot initiative. When you say we have to collect 1,250, no, we have to collect 2,500. So over these three rounds, we've collected 5,500 signatures. 5% of the Dayton city residents, for God's sakes. You know, you should push this ballot initiative, just push it forward. That's what the people are asking for. If, while we're out there interacting with people, if they were saying, why are you guys doing this? No, they're still angry, they're still concerned, some of them are outraged. Many of them talk about how this is modern-day redlining what took place, and I believe it is. So anyway, honor what the people want, and instead, I've lived in other cities, Boulder for a long time, Athens for a long time. I've been part of other ballot initiatives having to do with mining, having to do with floodplains, having to do with development. I have never witnessed city officials try to undermine the residents in such a way that you guys have indeed. There are ways, when that paper came up short, somebody could have made a phone call, for God's sakes. We have busted our humps, hundreds of hours collecting these signatures. So pass this ballot initiative, push it forward. Are you into democracy or not? Do you want the public to be involved or not? It sure doesn't seem like you do, unless they're multimillionaires buying a condo along the river, or they're a contractor, then you listen. Put this on the ballot, move it forward. On June 18, 2025, City Attorney Barbara Dosick wrote in an email, "The staff is committed to being helpful." That is a bunch of crap.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Galt.
That are all the speakers, Your Honor.
All the speakers? This time, close the public hearing. Please take your seat, sir. You're speaking at the end of the meeting?
That's traumatized by that.
That's okay.
That we need more and more...
Your Honor, I wanted to also provide an update. I did go back and look at the entirety of the Woolport Report, and they don't have any indications for the assumptions around the 300-bed. However, they did not model it after Metro. Metro has 731 beds, nor did they include, model it after Good Sam, because Good Sam had 491 beds. So, you know, at this point in time, I can only say they selected 300 based on, you know, their professional expertise, because we did have an expert from Woolport doing this report with regards to... And in the report, it said even a 50-bed hospital is a $50 million endeavor because of the capital and the staffing and the, and the costs, construction costs. So I did, I did research that though for you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're closed public hearing. Okay, so what's the will of the commission?
If it's okay, the commission, I think we should probably table this, give the Law Department, as discussed, time to look at this and get back to us.
Are you moving that?
I'm going to. Your Honor, I move to table, making a final decision until the commission has received a legal opinion from the Law Department determining the constitutionality of Section 11.06 and recommending to us how to proceed.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Blackshire moves in second to table this, and understand the attorneys will get together and work through this process. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Can I take a roll call?
Just take a roll call, please.
Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Epstein.
Turner Sloss?
So before I will like to cast my vote, I would just like for the record to note that I appreciate all of the testimonies and the work of the Clergy Community Coalition. Thank you, Dr. Brown, for being here, Attorney Brown for being here, as well as our Law Department for the work that you all have done, and I appreciate you all willing to consult and have deeper and further discussions as it relates to Section 11.06. And so at this moment, although I am very much in favor of us proceeding and moving forward and allowing the voters to vote, I do understand that there is a need for further discussion to take place. So therefore, I am in support of the pause, if you will, for us to collect more additional data and for further deliberation and counsel and conversation with Dr. Brown, as well as the Community Coalition and our Law Department.
Okay, so is that a yes vote?
That is a yes vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you move forward. So Ms. Blackshire, any citizens who have registered to speak?
Two citizens have registered, and I'd like to remind everyone of the three-minute time limit. Call to the podium, Darrell Lee.
Hello, everyone. My name, Darrell Lee, 1903 East Third Street, Dayton, Ohio.
You may begin.
Now I'mma begin about the laws in my life. My life, I fear for my life here in the city of Dayton. I don't feel safe. I don't even feel safe going at home at night. You know, the police, they talking about crime downtown, you know, these guys selling drugs, but it's not okay for somebody to do donations and have waters. Okay, now let's go back to the police, the chief of police. It's okay for the chief of police to make laws to, if someone gets shot and they be charged as a felonious assault, that's attempted murder. I'm alive, I can die any day now. Okay, now let's go back to my life and my children's life. Now, everyone here got a religion or got kids, absolutely. Now, everyone's kids is the most important things in their life, absolutely, correct. Now, let's go back to the rules and laws. Why could y'all not follow the rules and laws that the government provide to y'all? Absolutely. Well, no ones don't want to follow them, but the black people, right? We gotta follow laws. Why white people or Hispanic or the police department can't follow the rules? So if the fire department turn on a signal, no red, no red sign, they don't get no ticket? So we turn on a no red sign, we get a ticket. I don't believe that the chief of police should be in his position. I don't believe you should be in your position, Mayor, because the city of Dayton is not safe here for no blacks or anyone here. I fear for my life. My life been danger. I been shot 12 times. I got bullets in my head, I got bullets in my leg, I barely can boo-boo. I barely can eat at night because my kids is the most important things in my life, especially is my daughters, daddy's little girls. So how's we gonna think about that? Everyone in the public write on my name, Darrell Lee, from the courthouse, from the temp agencies, to the shelters that y'all provide money to. Why is that Darrell Lee and his kids is not safe in the state of Ohio or the county of Montgomery County? I barely can sleep at night, Mayor. I barely walk past the police because they harassing black people like us. So why is that we can't get no help in the city of Dayton? And why the police can't do their job right? I don't understand why. And we take matters in our hands, we go to jail. So if I kill a white person, shoot me, he gets set off free. Us blacks, we get lost in the system, just because y'all want money. It's all about money. So what about our lives? What about our health? What about our children?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Mayor, just for a point of clarity, please, for the vote, that is, I'm voting no, but I am in support of the...
You voted yes, but you're in support?
No, I am in support, let me be clear, I am in support of the consultation between the attorneys, and I'm voting for the ballot initiative to move forward.
Right, that was a yes vote, yes.
For the ballot initiative to move forward, but I'm voting for...
We only had one vote.
Right.
Okay, so you can't vote twice, you can't vote two times on one issue.
Right, but I'm clarifying my vote, to let you know what exactly that I'm voting for.
We only had one item up to vote on.
I know, I'm clear on that.
Okay.
I am clear on that.
We understand.
I am saying that I am in support of them having conversations, but I'm voting yes for them to proceed.
That was the vote.
Okay.
That was the vote.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, just making sure we clear.
Yeah, we are clear.
All right, thank you.
Your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Manager, ladies.
Name and address for the record.
I'm Stephen Sandstrom. I'm a Miami Spark resident and been a resident of Dayton for over 50 years. Appreciate you lying me and then to speak. I'm here to ask the City of Dayton to reinstate its golf tournament. I know there's been some minor matters in here, but this one's really important. When I first heard that the City of Dayton had canceled its city golf tournament, I was very disappointed, so were a lot of my fellow golfers who competed in the event for decades, actually. Our tournament's been around for over 100 years. The tournament may not have as many participants as it's had in previous decades, but those of us who compete in it, it's the most important golf event of the year. And I've personally been fortunate enough to compete successfully in it, and I also know that there's a lot of other Dayton golfers that would appreciate the opportunity to play for a city championship. We all pay taxes. I know Mayor Mims is a former champion. Man can play. And additionally, all participants pay entry fees, they pay greens fees. There's absolutely no cost to the city. Last year, I did discuss this personally with the mayor, he was nice enough to give me some time, and he seemed to agree that the tournament needs to happen. For whatever reason, it didn't last year. I guess there's some trepidation within Parks and Recreation as to like, no one's really taking the ball for that. Ironic, because you'd think that those guys could hold a ball. But the fact is, is that we've got the people in place to run it. Josh Bartleheim, the professional at Community Golf Course, he's willing to run it. There's no cost to the city. I don't think we need any authorization really from, or participation from Parks and Recreation. We just need your approval to have the tournament again, and we'll make it happen. Won't be any problem to schedule it, organize it, advertise it, or run it. So please give us permission to have our golf tournament again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please stay at the meeting, I'll point you in the direction of some individuals you can talk to.
I'm sorry, sir?
I said, please stay after the meeting?
Yes, sir.
We'll point you in the direction of someone you can talk to.
I sure will. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That concludes the comments, Your Honor.
That concludes, okay. Ms. Dikstein, any closing comments? That concludes. Okay. Ms. Dixte, any closing comments?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a few closing comments. First of all, Mr. Sandstrom will, with regards to Mr. Sandstrom's request, we'll certainly look into that and provide a update to the commission. I'm personally not familiar with the, the call for tournament and the cancellation. I think I know as to why some of that's happened, but let us dig in and find some more and get information back to you.
Okay.
I want to give a great shout out to our Recreation Department, Public Works, Fire, and Dayton Police Department, who did an amazing job with our fireworks show and related activities that came along with that show. I think that we've, I've heard a lot of really great compliments with regards to the fireworks show this year, and it's certainly something always appreciated. My last comment is essentially to recognize our Water Department Director, Mike Powell, who, yes, is still in the house. Mike will be retiring this Friday, and we want to certainly honor and acknowledge his 16 years as a City of Dayton employee, nine of those years being the director. And because of Mike's extensive private sector experience, he brought a lot of great things to the Water Department with regards to his, his leadership around developing the strong team that is in place today, as well as the successive succession planning that he uses and that they use in the Water Department that the entire organization has modeled after. He did a yeoman's job leading us through COVID. It was particularly difficult for the Water Department. They had a great majority of vacancy due to that post-COVID environment, and I think we're getting through it now. He also was a champion of innovation, and there was a lot of whether we were taking jobs back in sourcing because of the immense talent that we have in, in the workforce in the Water Department, or taking risks and exploring other opportunities to innovate around the, the various measures we've done throughout the years, whether it's the, you know, optimizing the revenue generation for the lime kiln, the solar projects that we are exploring, the recycled gas projects that we're, that we have instituted. All of that was because Mike was a champion of innovation and took those risks. So, I personally want to thank Mike Powell for his 16 years of service. I wish him very well. I understand, you know, he's got his, he's going to have his hands full after he retires, but you can see by the smile on his face, he's ready for the next chapter in his life. And I just want to thank you, Mike, for all your great leadership, all of the support that you have given your employees, and especially the opportunities for me to learn far more in-depth and detail about the, our water utility than I ever thought I would, so.
Okay. You know, Ms. Dixte, we just, please, Mr. Powell, come up so he can be seen on camera, and you can give us your last parting words, if you like.
Couldn't ask for a better boss. And she does know a lot about water. I get questions that make me think sometimes before I have to answer them because they're that well-thought-out and, and direct and require a lot of detail. But, so, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you all. Many of the things that Shelley mentioned could not have happened if you all didn't have the trust in us and our ability to deliver. And I will tell you, our team in the Water Department is second to none. I bragged about them amongst our, my, my peers and national groups and things like that or what have you, and I will put them up against anyone in the country, anyone in the world, when it comes to, to using and managing water, wastewater, stormwater systems or what have you. It's been a huge pleasure working with you all. I appreciate the trust and confidence from you, from Shelley, from Joe, and the rest of the city management team. It's been fun. It, it, it really has. I have enjoyed this. I actually never thought I would enjoy anything. I love cars, and I never thought I'd enjoy anything more than the 27 years I spent in the car industry. And this has surpassed it. It, it just kind of boggled my mind. I hope I made you all proud. I, I have a, a actual mission from my mother. I mean, she's actually here today. She, she told me with my very first job, she says, "No matter what they tell you your job is, I'm telling you what your job is, and your job is to make your boss look good." And I've strived to do that throughout my career. So, hopefully, I've made you all look good in the things that we've accomplished. But, you know, looking at the millions of dollars that we've kind of been able to generate from the standpoint of being innovative, going after a, a lot of these grants, 0% interest principal forgiveness loans, basically free money, those sorts of things or whatever, you all having the confidence in us for us to be able to pull those things off, apply for them, win them, but more importantly, to knock it out the park and deliver. Because we can get these grants, but if we don't spend the money and apply the, the, the things for implementing them one time, we lose it. But the team has been phenomenal. The, the water team is just that, is phenomenal. And I've been, I had a stacked deck. You know, I, I got the best team. I believe it's the best team in the city. I may be biased, but I got the best team to work with and have enjoyed every minute.
Okay.
So, thank you.
We've enjoyed you too. Yeah. Thank you so much. Now, comments from the commission?
Yes.
Like I said, we're, yes, please.
Yes, very briefly. I think Ms., I just would like to just echo Ms. Dixte's comments. I think she summed it up very nicely. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your commitment and your leadership. You're absolutely right. In regards to what you've been able to accomplish, you, you do have an awesome department, or you did, right, have an awesome department. And it's because of your ability to, to think outside of the box, your ability to trust your staff, and to be able to, to pass the torch on, to make sure that that succession plan is in fact in place. So, I commend you for your, your leadership. And if you want, Mike, could your, your family please stand and be recognized as well? And, and thank you for lending your, your, your family member, your son, and I, is it safe to assume, your, your wife, for lending you to us. So, we really appreciate all of the, the work you've, you've been able to accomplish.
All right. Thank you. That's my mom and my sister.
Your mom and your sister.
That's okay.
Mr. Fairchild.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, as I told you, your, your mother, she should be proud because she has raised a great son. And we are more than proud of you. You've served with distinction for the city. So, thank you for all of that. One of the things that I know is that I've seen you in other capacities, and you're a man of faith. And seeing you embody that in other parts of your life, but also knowing that it's a part of what you do here, that your service here is not only for our citizens, but for your own understanding of what it means to be a faithful person to God. So, thank you for that service. And I can't not look at you and think of God's grace flowing in abundant waters, you know, and rivers of rivers of grace. And, you know, you have literally provided water to our citizens, but you also provided that, that living water that goes beyond water. So, thank you.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Well said. Yeah, congratulations. I've really enjoyed working with you all, over all of these years, and, and too, have learned a great deal about water and the processes that you all use. But really, what I want to thank you for is the way that you've developed your organization. You've got a leader coming behind you that has worked with you for, for several years. And I just appreciate that when, when a leader steps up to recognize that you won't be there forever, and you need to have a strong staff to rely on. And you've done that. So, yeah, our Water Department is world-class, and, and you have a lot to do with that. And I want to thank you very much and wish you much success in your retirement.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations on your retirement. You've done a great job. And just as the city manager was mentioning, she mentioned some of the excellent work you did, some of the specific initiatives. But just in broad strokes, you brought us through some tough emergencies, some tough times, recovered from some, some crazy things happening, not only COVID, but accidents and natural disasters and all kinds of things. You were firm. You brought us back quickly. You focused on sustainability initiatives. City Manager mentioned some of those. And maybe most of all and best of all, you focused on making sure that we have even more reliable water system, whether that was increasing redundancy, sort of planning for future emergencies, making sure we have backups in place, making sure the system is more secure. You really did excellent work setting up the, the next director and really the, the city residents of the future to have a, a secure and, and a great water system. So, thank you very much for those efforts. We appreciate it. Hope you have a great retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah. My commissioners have highlighted, and City Manager highlighted some great things that you've been able to do. I am most still in, in great memory of the fact that your department winning twice the, we call it United Way contribution, when you got the reward of my world-famous pancakes, and with cooking pancakes for 400 people, twice. Quite a task, but I enjoy doing every bit of it. So, again, thank you so much for all the great work that you've done. That just sort of highlights how great your department is in so many different ways. And again, I'm always enamored with the aspect of the, the lime kill sales that you have increased, where we are the leader in the nation relative to that. So, again, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
I will. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Blackshire, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, closing comments?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just would like to, again, echo Ms. Dixte's comments for regards to the lights and flights. Well, very well attended. And so, I appreciate everyone coming out, and, and thank you, and kudos to all of the staff members for all of the, the great work that they were able to do. I know it was a labor intense, and I know they were out there for, for quite a number of hours. So, we really appreciate everyone coming out, as well as the staff. Couple of additional comments, and thank you, Ms. Ree, for providing closing comments this morning. Preservation Dayton will host a 90-minute downtown walking tour. That's this Friday, July 11th, promptly starting at 5:30 from the Dayton Arcade interest on Fourth Street, and tickets are $12, and they must be reserved in advance. And as recommended for people to visit preservationdayton.com for additional information. Would like to thank also Major Halls for his presentation this morning. Ms. Shiner, I believe I have her. Ms. Shiner, thank you for your, your comments and your presentation, as well as Mr. Paulette, Ms. Dosick, and Chief Rice for their, their comments this morning, their, their presentation this morning as it relates to the organizational culture and all of the, the work that's being done in that, in that vein. Also, I would like to thank the Clergy Community Coalition. Thank you all. Again, I commend you all for your, your efforts and your leadership in circulating the petition, or rather, circulating, yes, the petition to collect signatures and being able to meet that goal. Ms. Blackshire, thank you for your work and your report that you have completed. And again, I appreciate Mr. Paulette for his revisiting of the, the report. Dr. Carter, thank you for being here, your comments. Professor Mark Brown, Ms. Shiner, again, for your presentation this morning. And Bishop Richard Cox, Nancy Keel, Ms. Nancy Keel, and Ms. Gault. And I just want to make this point very briefly. And the mayor alluded to this as well, like, we're seeing very, very challenging times right now. There are a number of constraints. Dr. Carter also made mention to it, 150 hospitals in rural areas will be closed. We're seeing a number of, of cuts across the board at the federal level. But I also believe that, with all that being said, this is a time, and it's imperative for us to, to govern with empathy and for not, for us to not always look towards the, the federal level. This is an opportunity for us to be innovative, to really pull on that, that spirit in that vein, and the ingenuity of the city of Dayton and what we've been able to, to accomplish over the number of years. We've been world-renowned in a number of different spaces. When I think about the priority board, aviation, right, and flight, and all of the things that we've been able to do, this is a time for us to really roll up our sleeves, to think outside of the box, and to allow the voters to make the decision. This is in fact a democracy. We're holding on to that by a very thin, thin line, a thin, thin thread. And so, again, this is an opportunity for us to, to lead and to showcase, and for us to protect our democracy by allowing the voters an opportunity to do, to have a voice and to do their will as to how they want, in fact, the, the level of services provided, given all of the various threats. We have to, in fact, think outside of the box and to lead with empathy and compassion, and to, and my colleague can appreciate this, from that, that human rights perspective, right, and really being mindful about the people in which we, we are, have been elected to serve. And so, with that, I'm, I'm very grateful and thankful for the Law Department and their review, and their consultation, and their willingness to have those in-depth conversations with not only attorney, Dr. Brown, but as well as with the Community Coalition. So, again, I thank you all for your willingness and the ability for us to move forward with this. My only hope is that with that, once we close this piece out, is that we find a way, and there is an opportunity, and I think we spoke to this, as well as repealing, amending whatever the directions and the, the opinion of the, the Law Department may be for Section 1106 as it relates to ballot initiatives. And I believe that is all I have. I will say this, another full weekend for our Recreation and Park Services, or Recreation and Youth Services, excuse me. Wreck Your Hood is this Saturday, the 12th, and I believe it's in Five Oaks, so, 300 Delaware Avenue. So, there were, again, another full weekend for Recreation and Youth Services Department. And again, it's, it's an awesome time. So, I hope that families and, and community leaders will be able to come out this weekend. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, thank you. Want to express my, well, thank you, Commissioner, for your comments. Want to express my gratitude for the administration and the Parks and Recs for the fine July 3rd celebration. Our family truly enjoyed it, and other people who were there heard, heard that, I've heard that from them as well. So, thank you. While I can't enter into the debate of the substance, I think I can. I'm in order to express my gratitude for the Law Department for attending to these items, and also to our citizens who are showing us what democracy works, looks like at the foundational level. So, thank you for your work and the hours. And I've seen you out on the streets on hot days and rainy days, and I appreciate your commitment to making democracy work. There's some upcoming events this weekend. Front Street has a food rally on Friday and Saturday. The Levitt is having its concerts, and there will be a Human Rights Solidarity Rally at Jem City Market from noon to 2:00 on Saturday. And I encourage people to come out to that, to recognize human rights, but also to shop our market. And so, encourage people to come and observe that day, but also to be a good patron of the Jem City Market.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, just one thing. I, I want you to check out the Launchpad. It's a monthly event designed for entrepreneurs and small business owners. The next one will be Thursday, July 17th, 9:00 to 5:00 at the Hub at the Dayton Arcade. And this month's focus is business operations, optimizing space and inventory for sustainable growth. And this is just a great free resource for entrepreneurs and small business owners in Dayton. And I would just encourage small business owners to take advantage of all of these kinds of opportunities as we try to grow our small business community in the city. I think it's very important, and it's what's going to keep us sustainable over the long term. So, I too want to thank the Community Clergy Coalition for their work. I mean, this is remarkable that they're able to get these signatures in. I respect that. I respect that a lot. You're, I think you all are clear about where I stand on this. I think it's misguided and that we don't have a, a plan that will actually put a hospital in West Dayton, nor that I think it's sustainable. But I do appreciate your work out in the community and your advocacy for this effort to increase healthcare in our community. So, we'll continue to look at this. And for the record, this body has not decided one way or another whether or not we're going to allow this on the ballot. So, stay tuned. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner. Well said. And I want to mention, too, that nominations are open for the 2025 Food Champions Award. This is an organization sponsored by, actually created by Commissioner Judy Dodge of the county, the local food, food policy coalition. They like to recognize folks that make it easier to access food, to make it available to folks that need it here in the county. There are applications that need to be submitted by this Friday, July 11th, to recognize outstanding local food leaders in the county, Montgomery County. The application is online at bit.ly/2025foodchamp. I'm going to say that again. Bit.ly/2025foodchamp, no spaces there. Award Awardees will be celebrated at a special event on Friday, August 8th, at Second Street Market, and that will kick off the Local Food Campaign and Farmers Market Week. We all know what kind of issues that we've been facing around here regarding food access. I congratulate Commissioner Dodge for her work, some of the folks here, Commissioner Shaw has been on that committee also. So if you know someone who's been a leader, this is a great way to, to recognize them and get Local Food Campaign kicked off. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate the comments from my colleagues. Very well said. I'll also add my congratulations to the Clergy Coalition for their work, getting the petitions that where necessary to move this to the ballot. And again, we'll be consulting with our attorneys and take their advice as we move forward. Additionally, I'd like to just talk about just very briefly the kickoff of the 173rd Montgomery County Fair. It was there for the kickoff this past weekend, it was very, very hot, and for those who are still interested in going to the fair, great opportunities there, a lot of great things to see, and for those who have not seen animals in a while, there are a great collection of those, those creatures who help keep us alive, you know, you think about that. A lot of young people are very happy to see them as well. Planning food, healthy food styles, all those kind of things are being shared with citizens at the, at the fairgrounds. It's located right now, again, at 645 Infilly Road, and of course, it will be going on from July 6th until July 12th. So please be guided by that. The food truck rally is going to be, again, in Dayton, Thursday, July 11th, that's tomorrow, from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. And again, a lot of great food options there. Friday will be there from 12 until 11:00 a.m. And then it's, no, Friday is 12, it's starting at 11:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Come out, enjoy a lot of exciting food. I think there'll be some 50 different food trucks and a wide variety of delicious options, and more than 100 artists will also be showing some of their work as well. And then lastly, the Dayer Ballpark, the Dragons Classic Movie Night, July 12th. The gates will open at 6:00 p.m. with the featured movie, The Troy Story. I'm not familiar with that, but I think it was a story that was, I think, authorized in 1995. Starts at 8:00 p.m. Enjoy a full night of movie, fun, exciting appearances from, of course, the Dragons team, as well as the mascots, Heather and Jim, also available. A lot of games, and the tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for young people who are under 17. So, thank you so much, and thank you for a very, very robust meeting with a lot of great information, and with love and peace for all and hatred for none, this meeting is adjourned.